Welcome to our regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Wednesday, October 16. Could I have roll call, please?
We have eight present, one presiding, and three absent.
Let the record show that we have Commissioners O'Neil, Olson, and Morgan are excused. Could you please join us in the prayer and the pledge with Commissioner McDonough?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which shall greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow, direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens and
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Thank you. At this time, I would call for any public comment on any item that is on tonight's agenda. Please come to the microphone and identify yourself, please. Name and address.
Madam Chair. Oregon? No.
There you go.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the council, my name is Evan Barrett. I live at 807 West Silver. I am here tonight as a representative of Restore Our Creek Coalition. I wanted to speak briefly on Communication 19-508, which is Consent Agenda Item Number 22. It was a letter sent to you by Nordee Tretheway of Restore Our Creek Coalition, along with an attachment. The attachment was a copy of an editorial, a guest editorial, that he had published last Friday in the Montana Standard. Nordee extends his regrets that some family things came up, so he couldn't be here. So he asked me to, among other things, to express that we are not here to request a segregation of this item. In fact, we specifically don't want it segregated. We're happy to have it put on file, but want to simply amplify quickly a couple items and make sure that there's a full understanding of the purpose of the letter. As you know, and you've read, after really working for pretty much a year to try to secure funding for some review and analysis to be done regarding the question of whether or not a creek can flow through the Silver Bow Creek Corridor after all the remedial actions are undertaken by the PRPs under the CD that we're anticipating to be released fairly soon. As you know, EPA Regional Administrator Benevento made a point of saying that what was going to happen as a result of the CD would not preclude the placement of a creek, a restored Silver Bow Creek, in that corridor. That statement by Administrator Benevento was amplified and repeated over and over again, not just by himself and other members of the EPA, but by representatives of the Butte Silver Bow Government, representatives of the state of Montana, representatives of the EPA. All the parties attendant to the CD all said, "What we're doing here will not preclude a creek." Well, you know, words are one thing, but the proof's always in the pudding. And so that's what we were working for all this time, to try to secure resources so this review could take place and essentially establish the validity of that statement, that what remedial actions will not preclude a creek going through there. Frankly, we're optimistic that that will be the results of this analysis. However, we won't know until the analysis is done. That analysis has just started. As I said, we were requesting the funds and the parties to provide the funding for this a year ago. And we were finally, thanks to EPA, able to secure the funding. And by the time we got through the federal hoops of, you know, July became August, and August became September, and September became October, before the contract was signed with CTEC, which is the money is going through, and then the contract with the independent contractor to do the analysis. That independent contractor is Water and Environmental Technologies. They are now underway. Their analysis, we, under contract, is to take roughly 60 days. The purpose of the letter was to say that we don't know if this CD is going to come out today. It was supposed to come out Friday, maybe today, maybe next week, but it's going to come out pretty quick here. And in the meantime, we just wanted to express that Restore Our Creek Coalition, which represents an awful lot of groups and people, wants very much that the Council of Commissioners, which is required to sign the CD, what comes out in the CD, hold off signing anything until we see the results of this analysis. The people of Butte have organized together, working with Restore Our Creek Coalition for four years, and nearly 1,000 directly involved, 3,500 with signatures, over and above that, a lot of involvement. And in good faith, I think it would be an act of good faith by the council, to see the results of this analysis before putting pen to paper and signing the documents. You know, it's been 30-plus years that we've all been waiting. At least 12 to 13 of them were behind a curtain, and no one knew what was going on. Somehow, we're hopeful that you will see, and the other parties as well, EPA and the state, we can't ask ARCO to do anything, they're private, but we're asking the public entities to forego signature until this process is completed and we can see that the, essentially the promises that were made, that it could receive a creek, and it could function, it would not be precluded by these activities, in fact, was real. Again, we're optimistic. We're working with WET, and we think that's what's going to come out of this. But the people of Butte deserve to have it known ahead of time, not after the fact. And for all this waiting, I'm sure that some people may want to rush to a signature. I certainly hope you don't rush to a signature. And there may be other things that you may want to hold it up for, but we hope you will at least hold it up until we see the results of this. And as soon as this analysis is completed, we'll immediately make it public, and we'll be able to proceed at that point. So that's the reason why the letter was written, just in case there was, it was going to come out, and there's going to be a mad rush or a request for fast action. We think a more thoughtful approach, including waiting for this analysis, would be the wise thing to do for the council, the state, and the EPA. So I wanted, we wanted to make that point. We don't want it segregated. We don't want a bunch of, we just simply want you to know that's why we wrote the letter. And we hope that we're not calling for action. In fact, we're calling for inaction. So, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Evan. Any other parties? Mary Kay?
Good evening. I'm Mary Kay Craig, 518 West Granite Street in Butte. I'm a member of the Restore Our Creek Coalition, as well as the Citizens for Labor and Environmental Justice, as well as CTEC. And I've been working on Superfund stuff for, as a volunteer for many years, and had also worked for the Clark Fork Coalition way in the '90s. But, you know, since we've been going, I was just trying to do the arithmetic, it's 36 years, is it, that we've had this Superfund thing happening since '83? And now we're asking for two more months, so that we can see whether or not what we were told is correct. So I'm speaking actually today for the future people of Butte. This is your kids. This is the Butte kids that will be here in the future. We know that mine is going to be not here in 30 to 50 years, according to what they said is what's available to mine. Then all that water will be coming down. We know that there's plenty of water for a creek. That is not the issue. The issue is, are we willing to wait? Today's issue is, are we willing to wait for two months, so that we can see whether or not those kids can have a creek in the future? It seems logical that we must give this extra two months. In December, WET will make their report to CTEC, and it will come out to the public, and we will know whether or not the PRPs were correct when they stated that nothing in this plan would preclude a creek. The second thing that I'd like you to consider is, don't be intimidated, if you will, by sword rattling that we might end up with a UAO. There's no way that a UAO is going to come forward at you unless, you know, in this two-month period. It just won't happen. It's not logical. You're waiting. You're waiting to see what the results are of the evaluation of existing data that will be done by WET under contract to CTEC. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Any further comment on any item that is on tonight's agenda? Ed?
I'm Ed Van Robb, 2601 Grand Avenue, President of the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc. I am making the following comment for and on behalf of the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., Board of Directors. Reference, Superfund Report to this, to the Commissioners, and Section 1, Consent Agenda B, A, B Communications, Item 22, Communication Number 19-508, requesting Council of Commissioners to consider the Restore Our Creek position before signing consent decree, 19-508. Under our current form of local government, this legislative body is supposed to function as a checks and balance to the executive branch of government, not just a rubber stamp to what is recommended by the executive branch or the Superfund Committee. I do not understand how you can even start to fulfill that function when the 2018, 2019 Butte Silver Bow budget only shows $5,000 for extra Council Commissioners staff. You have heard from Restore Our Creek Coalition, Special Interest Group, and probably from other few concerned citizens, but I have not heard of either a Commissioner or this Council of Commissioners planning to call for a fact-finding citizen listening session before you decide on the consent decree. Nor have I heard any questions from this council directed at the Butte Silver Bow Superfund Division staff as a result of the Council of Commissioners' technical staff This policy determining body is about to be faced with one of the greatest and most far-reaching decisions that has ever, or probably ever will be, presented to this council. And that this body seems not to have been able to come up with any appropriate questions for the Butte Silver Bow Superfund Department staff, I would like to suggest a couple. Several months ago, we, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., brought before this body a presentation of a research study that indicated that there are hazardous-to-human-health heavy metals circulating in the air of Butte Silver Bow and accumulating in sufficient amounts in the human population, in significant amounts in the human population in Butte. And that the proper procedure to verify if such a finding of research are correctly done or not is to do another official study and see if the results are duplicatable. We, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation, Inc., also brought before this body a request that the Butte Silver Bow Health Department commission a study. Before you consider accepting or rejecting this consent decree referred to in Communication 19-508, the Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation asks that you do not be distracted by the Restore Our Creek issue, but that you focus on the most important issue of all, to assure the humans in Butte and the rest of the world that Butte is an environmentally healthy place in which to live and work. We ask that you request a report from the Butte Silver Bow Health Department Environmental Section as to the results of their study relative to airborne hazardous metals. Are heavy metals hazardous to human health circulating in the air in Butte priority soil Superfund site or not? What is being done now and in the future to assure not the fish, but the humans in Butte and the world that Butte is an environmentally healthy place in which to live and work? We respectfully ask you to consider this request and take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments from anybody caring to speak on any item on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, we go on to items not addressed on the agenda. There are no items that we are not already addressing on the agenda this evening. The second, the next item is Superfund Report to Commissioners. As you can see, I am not Dave Palmer. He's not here tonight because he and Commissioner Olson, who is our representative in the negotiations in Helena, are in Helena. They've been there all day. And I got a call from Dave about 6 o'clock saying that he, they are not done, and they will continue with their negotiations. So along with several of our other Superfund team members, they're all in Helena in the negotiations. So we will not have a report, but I look forward to that report soon. So hopefully, that'll be at our next meeting. And again, there's no chief executives report. So we're moving on to Section 1. This is our consent agenda. Are there any friendly amendments or segregations? All right. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Chairman Schott. I'd like to segregate Number 23, Communication 19-509.
Okay. Any other segregations or friendly amendments? Okay.
23.
Commissioner McDonough, would you care to make a motion on the consent agenda, then?
Sure. We have no others. Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Section 1, the Consent Agenda, Items A, 1 through 4, and Items B, Communications, 1 through 23, with the exception of 23, Communication Number 19-509.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of Item Number 23 in the Communications 19-509. Is there anything on the question? This is a roll call vote. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Bill? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are eight ayes and zero nays.
Motion passes. Okay. Item 23, Commissioner McDonough. This is Communication 19-509. Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting Council Commissioners to request time on the November 6, 2019 council agenda to hold a public hearing on the ordinance established, establishing the Harrison Avenue South Urban Renewal Area with a tax increment financing provision. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I haven't been in town a couple of weeks here, and don't have any answers. And I saw the article in the Standard today, but I'm sure we'll have further discussion. However, I do sit on the Burt Mooney Airport Authority Board, and it appears that the airport land is now being discussed, is not being included in the proposed new district, which would be detrimental to the airport's position. You know, the airport has been looking for a long time to either market or sell the land that they own along Harrison Avenue, and the revenue would be greatly beneficial in the sustainability of the airport. So I know that we won't have this answer tonight, but moving forward, I would like to see that at least the ground at the airport be included back within the plan moving forward. You know, that sandpit area is going to take a lot of investment to get backfill in there, and then to get somebody to actually incentivize them to develop the land, which would be beneficial to everybody in Butte, because the more sustainable the airport is, the less worry we have here at the courthouse and council chambers. So just keep that in your thoughts. And if you're asking questions, I would advocate, as the representative of the Burt Mooney Airport Authority Board for the council, that we include that land back in, at least surrounding the airport. And with that, I'll just make a motion that we, you know, continue to hold this in the committee of the whole pending public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to continue the original recommendation to hold this in the community of the whole pending public hearing, Communication 19-509. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are eight ayes and zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brendan. All right. Moving on to Section 2. These are ordinances and resolutions that are referred to judiciary. We have Item 1 is Resolution 19-64. Item 2 is Resolution Number 19-65. Item Number 3 is Council Bill 19-12. And last is Item 4, Council Resolution 19-66. Just please note, they will now be in our judiciary committee. Moving on to Section 3. These are ordinances and resolutions in final reading. Item 1 is Council Bill Number 19-10, Council Ordinance 19-10. Would the clerk please read the title?
Council Ordinance, Council Bill Number 19-10, Council Ordinance Number 19-10, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2.88 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code B-SBMC and entitled Animal Services Board, and specifically amending Sections 2.88.010, 2.88.020, and 2.88.040 of the B-SBMC, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I move to place Council Bill Number 19-10, Ordinance Number 19-10, on final reading and past having been fully, or deemed fully read at length.
We have a motion and a second to move Council Bill Number 19-10 to final reading. Is there anything on the question? This is a roll call vote. Would everyone please vote? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
There are seven ayes and one nay.
Motion passes. The second item in final reading, we have a Council Resolution Number 19-61. Would the clerk please read the title?
Council Resolution Number 19-61, A Resolution Establishing the Two Justice Courts for the City, County, and Butte Silver Bow, Montana, each as a justice court of record and providing for an effective date herein.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution 19-61 on final reading and past having been deemed fully read at length.
We have a motion and a second to move Council Resolution Number 19-61 to final reading. This is a roll call vote. Would everyone please vote? Oh, on the question, excuse me. Commissioner Anderson?
I don't think it really matters, but I just wanted, there was a typo on the last line of the title of this. I don't know if that really matters, if the word here is misspelled.
Okay. Duly noted. I believe that is probably correct in the document, but thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Okay. Has everyone voted? Would anyone care to change their vote? Would the clerk, Anderson? Clerk, please record the vote.
There are eight ayes and zero nays.
Motion passes. Okay. We've now reached the point in our agenda where we have a public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. Mr. Van Robb?
I'm Ed Van Robb, 2601 Grand Avenue. Just to advise you that the Green Container Survey is up on the Butte Silver Bow website. Please advise your constituents Please advise your constituents of same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, would everyone please note the calendar of events coming up? And I, is there anything else to come before us this evening, for a call for an adjournment? No? Commissioner McDonough? We have a motion to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.